While everybody comes in, if people who are in the meeting, welcome. You look in the chat, I provided a link for both these board agendas. And for anybody curious, board policies, in case there's anything anyone needs to refer to. I will go over a couple of rules, I guess, while we wait to call the meeting to order. Nothing new. If you have objections for perceived violations of the Sunshine Act, you are to enter those objections into the group chat to everyone. And the solicitor who is present this evening, attorney Audi, will interject if action is needed. No action, no reaction would imply that the solicitor did not see a need to interject at that time and that we were within the scope of the law. People can refer to policy 903, where it states that we opt to take comment on all agenda items at the beginning. So we will open that up as we have always done. At the beginning, to take comments on agenda items, we're sticking with the four minutes that seemed to be a good time last time. And the only other thing, we'll have another open public comment period at the end for non-agenda items, again, four minutes per person. And with the chat being open to everyone, I would ask that it be used only for pertinent board information, excuse me, information that needs to be shared. Objections, if somebody wants to put their name on the list to talk. There were some comments that were made in the chat that were unnecessary, the last board meeting, and I'd like to think we can all just be adults about this and use it as it's intended and not be incendiary towards anyone, regardless of whether we agree with them or not. I think I covered everything with that. So with that, well, is Lori here? Yes, she is. Okay. We'll call the meeting to order and do this pledge allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please let the record show that we held an executive session prior to this meeting for legal and personnel matters. And with that, we will open it up to public comments on agenda items only. Okay, so I see in the comment we, that I can see to everybody that Sheeran Knight would like to make a comment. I don't know if you have other ones on the list. Mary Jean.
That's all I have at this time.
Okay, well, let's hear from Mrs. Knight.
Knight, you're unmuted.
Can you hear me? Can you hear? Yeah, sorry.
This is Shira Knight.
My apologies.
Okay, our agenda tonight discusses rapid COVID testing administered by the school. I have a few questions that I hope you will be addressing tonight. Will the school nurse be administering the tests? What is the liability associated with administering these tests? What happens if a kid gets injured? Would the rapid test change current quarantine timelines? What if one parent consents to the test, but the other parent doesn't? Who will pay for the test? Will this be an additional taxpayer expense? Is T A S D receiving additional government funds to administer these tests? Who manufactures the tests? Where are they produced? What country? What's the shelf life of these tests? Has the school done a survey of the community to ask parents if they are interested in rapid testing in the school? I believe that there were several vaccine clinics that were scheduled at the school, and I believe that most of them were canceled due to lack of interest. So I wanted to know if we've even gauged if there's interest in these in these COVID tests. Lastly, the flu and strep throat go through our school every winter, yet we've never tested our children for any of these viruses. I'm asking why we would start considering this now. And I truly hope that the school focuses on education. T A S D is a learning facility and not a medical facility. So I'm hoping to get some answers to those questions tonight.
Sure, that was a number of questions, and if you would kindly send that to me, I would appreciate it. As I will follow up and I will get the answers. Like, I have no idea where the tests are manufactured. I, you know, I can answer basic questions from what I've been told through the three presentations I've sat through with the company. But there were some things on your, your list of questions I don't have the answers to. So in an effort to be thorough, if you would email me those, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Yuhas has a question. Mr. Yuhas, you're unmuted.
All right, good evening, guys. I was referred to the 900, the 900 section for public participation. And it gives us the ability to speak on more than one topic. So I have three topics I want to talk about. So, and they're all agenda items. So, so as long as nobody is waiting in line, I can talk on all three and I can take my turn and come back, but I'm going to have three questions, okay?
George, you have four minutes. Yeah, it's four minutes total, and the policy states that we have the option to take all comments at the beginning, and that's what we're doing, and we're having four minutes per speaker, so.
Okay, so.
It starts now, so.
That's fine, and I appreciate that. But when you get a chance, finish reviewing nine, the 900 section, please. Because we're going to wind up having a sunshine violation. So right away, you're going to be, you're in for that. So with the enrollment that you guys are about to talk about, you guys are aware that there's active groups that are putting seminars together to pull cyber away from Tuncanic because of its inadequateness or the desire not to use Tuncanic cyber. You guys aware of those groups? I'll take that as a yes. Is there anybody else waiting before I move on to another topic?
You have a full four minutes, so keep going.
All right, so I have, I have four minutes per topic if I choose, but you can keep going that way. What I want to know now is what power and authority are you using to use the school as a medical facility with the testing? Because it's certainly the 1955 Act, so I'd like to know. So is anyone who's going to answer that question if I ask this out loud, or is it going to take a FOIA request and legal and the community money to answer that question? Is there anybody going to answer that? So anybody who's listening, that means that that's going to cost you money because they can't answer or won't answer.
George, we're discussing that topic for the first time tonight, so we're not passing it, we're not approving it, we're discussing it. So we'll discuss it tonight and see where it goes.
Where do you feel as a school board that you have the power and authority to even discuss such a thing?
George, keep going. I just, I just responded to that one. I just wanted to give a chance to comment.
Okay, and I think, let's see, what was the other one? We talked about, oh, the objections, the, that 900. The objections can't be just restricted to sunshine violations. If you guys were going to authorize and create a new action that allows drinking on school property, clearly I would need a chance as a citizen to object to that. So objections are not just for sunshine violations. Objections are for legal objections generally. You understand? So it's not just for sunshine violations, because that would be a big error. That means I have to sit here and not be able to legally object as a leader from the citizenry, not to stop the school board from allowing drinking into the school. So if you don't mind, make sure you correct that with all the people that are listening. This is not just sunshine objections. This is legal objections. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask Mr. Yuhas a question? Or no?
If it's not an agenda item, I'd hold till the end.
Okay.
We had Anne, who would like to have, ask a question.
Anne, you're unmuted and you can ask your question.
Okay, hi, thank you. My question is.
Can you state your full name, just because it's not on your.
Sure, Holly. Yes, it's Anne Bodine.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm just wondering, is there any way we can consider having future board meetings maybe held outdoors in the stadium so we can participate more easily? We live in a rural area, we have Frontier Internet, and it's very hard for us to stay hooked up, and I have a really hard time trying to get into the meeting, and sometimes we get disconnected. And then also, if I could, I would just like to say on another topic on the agenda, the testing. As a parent, I'm very opposed to the idea of the rapid testing for the children in school right now, especially if it's the invasive nasal swab test versus the non-invasive saliva test. I really feel that if parents choose to have their kids tested, it should be our choice when and where to have this done. And most importantly, what type of test we're willing to have them subjected to. And thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. So there are no other comments? All right, if you look in the agenda, we have the enrollments. I will point out, because I asked based on some public requests, that we add a row to this that indicates our out-of-district cyber charter student enrollment. So prior to any board action regarding masks, the district's charter cyber enrollment number was 107 students. As of 10-1, it had increased to 113 students. So we will start receiving that information with our our monthly enrollment list.
Holly, I have a quick thing to ask. Can someone email me, Heather or Mary Jean, or list it to our school district enrollments? How many students are attending out-of-district cyber or charter?
That, that's the number I just gave. That, that's a new row on the enrollments. At the very bottom is out-of-district cyber.
Okay, oh, I see it. I see it. Okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem. The other notable on that, you know, which is, you know, what you, we would expect because of the change, was that Fusion C3 has gone from 102 students on the first to 130 on, well, the first of September to 130 on the first of October. All right, moving along to approval of minutes. We had a motion to approve the minutes from the September 23rd public work session board meeting.
Motion to approve, Holly.
All right, any discussion?
Rule call. Mrs. Bennett? Mrs. Bennett?
Lori, you're on mute.
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Pobola?
Yes.
Mr. Swilly?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
All right, superintendent's report.
So I am looking for a motion to approve items one through five under the superintendent's report.
Motion approved.
Second. Second.
Any discussion? Rule call.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Pobola?
Yes.
Mr. Swilly?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. I just wanted to say, the, as a board member, I wish the very best to, I guess, Mrs. Doc Howell in her new adventure at Elk Lake, so Godspeed and good luck. All right, committee reports. That would be you, Mr. Corolla.
Yeah.
Sorry, I wasn't.
We, we had an extracurricular meeting right before the board. The one topic was to open up, to allow the administration to open up the facilities and the use for the community on the Sundays. Heather presented no information from Department of Health or Department of Education that would interfere with that. And I think, I think the extracurricular committee agreed that the kids on the campus use the facilities, try to, try to, you know, move in the direction of normal as best we can. So that's my recommendation to the board.
Great, as we discussed in the committee meeting, and that is not something that requires a board action. We appreciate the working relationship with admin to bring that to the committee, but we won't be requiring any votes on that. Are there any other committee, sorry?
Oh, sorry, Holly. I was just going to, this is Shane. I was going to request that we schedule a building and grounds committee meeting. I would be open to the idea of having it before our next board meeting. So if we want to try and piggyback off of that, we could probably schedule it for six, 6:15, if the board would be agreeable.
Just for the public's understanding, that is on the 27th, Wednesday, the 27th of October. In October, our board meetings are moved to Wednesdays.
Shane, that works for me.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to say six o'clock?
Let's say six o'clock. Yes, please.
All right, any other committees that need to meet? Moving on to unfinished business. Item number one, the rapid COVID testing administered by school with parent permission. I would just preface this discussion by saying that we, as a board, had already said publicly when we had talked in the past about the fact that nobody on the board seemed open to the idea of any kind of random or canvassing type testing. So what I think is the option on the table is that there is a program through the state that allows school districts to offer testing, COVID, the rapid COVID testing. And we would, this discussion, my understanding is that it's around the idea of having it as an option for parents if, who want to have, like, at parental request of the district to have a student tested. Whether that be for quarantine reasons, or they're symptomatic, or, or whatever the case may be. So Heather, whatever else you have to, I just want to preface that part of the discussion.
So I circled back around with the company, and Sheera, I can answer a couple of your questions. The, the the company is called Ginkgo Biotech, I believe it is. It's Ginkgo something. And anyway, that, that is a state-funded grant. So it is, it would not come at any cost to the taxpayers. And so I, I did reach out to those folks again. And I asked them if they would be willing to do, if any of the board members would like to come and, and have, and see their presentation online, then, you know, we could arrange that. And they are willing to do that. I know from our superintendent's meeting this morning, there is no district around us that has started this. There are six that are saying that they're interested. So I can't give you at any point, like, what are the pitfalls, or what are they running into? I, I don't know. I will tell you that it the, I, I understand the idea of doing the rapid testing at the parent's request. However, right now, in the Pennsylvania Department of Health guidance, we still have to exclude kids from school, and they can't test until day five. And so the, I know that in other states, you guys might be reading articles, that in other states, you know, there all of the kids come down to the nurse's office in the morning that are, have permission to get tested, and they get tested, and then they get, they're allowed to stay in school. You can't do that in PA. It doesn't, it's, it's not an option at this time. So it's, you know, I know some of you were interested in this only because you thought it would shorten quarantine, or it would allow us not to put kids out on quarantine. At that, at this juncture, that is not an option. Is my understanding from my meeting this morning. So I am willing to reach back out to them. I'm willing to set up a webinar. You know, their presentation is a half an hour. People could ask questions. You know, I, I certainly don't have any more information than I've given you in the past about how this would be done. But I, I will take the direction from the board and do whatever you want me to do.
Yeah, my only interest in it was shortening quarantine timeframes for those who want it, just because of the availability and turnaround of testing, Heather. So is, you know, if, if a child's out on quarantine and they want to get tested to shorten that to seven days versus four, versus the full 10, they could help that, but doesn't, it's not, it's just not a huge help. So the, the fact that nobody in the neighboring districts is already doing it, I, I almost feel like by the time we get this set up and going, our county numbers are going to be back to where they were in the summertime, and it's going to, it's not going to be the same value as it is today. You know, I, I just feel like these numbers eventually are going to go down, and we're going to be back to somewhat business as usual. At least, I'm surely hopeful for that. So I, I'm, I'm less, I, I don't know whether it's going to serve a great purpose.
I think, and I, I have to speak up and advocate for our nursing staff as well. It would add a level of complexity that we're in, and this is complex enough, but it would add an extra level of complexity to, to what they're already being asked to do.
Yeah, it would only shave three days off the quarantine time at best. So it move you from 10 to seven, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And you got the weekend, the weekends are in there too. So I, I just, it sounds like a lot of work for little benefit.
Yeah, and I, I think, if I can chime in, I, I think it's a double-edged sword. I think we're listening to the community here. I think there's been some community, not only tonight, but even talking to people out in the community, myself. You know, it's, there's some medical issues, and we heard, I believe, from the community before. And I would agree that the doctors, their doctor knows the best. So I think the testing should be, you know, out in the medical community. I know, Heather, this was a presentation, it would be parental consent, so we're not forcing kids to get tests against their parents' will. But the reality is, and I would agree with John, I'm not sure there's the value to even exploring this any further unless there's a change in the, the Pennsylvania code, the law, things like that. And it, you know, we, John, I think you mentioned, it looks like this is not going to decrease a disruption in education. So the quarantine numbers really wouldn't change that much, even if we had onsite testing. For the, for those reasons, I'm not sure I'd want to pursue it.
So for the public's knowledge, there are other districts and states outside of Pennsylvania that are allowing the rapid tests, and then there's no quarantine. So you'd be able to take that quarantine from seven to 10 days and not have your child miss school at all. But that's not currently the Pennsylvania Department of Health regulation. So that was the real reason why I was interested, is seeing if we can get to the place where we could eliminate quarantines for close contacts. So I, I'm, it sounds like I'm out.
Anyone else on the board feel we need to continue to look at this, or are we ready to take it off of our agenda?
I would just take it off the agenda myself.
I agree.
I did, I did Google some of the, trying to find some schools that were doing this testing. And I was just doing an overall search. I was not searching for grants, but I agree, this is for the medical field. And I do not believe we should be involved in that.
Okay, well, that being said, we can take that off, and that business is no longer unfinished. Item number two, under unfinished business, was the recommendation that a resolution be adopted to approve bus and van contracts as presented. This was tabled last time because we didn't have enough people to pass it present, because Lori has to abstain. So, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Rule call.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Pobola?
Yes.
Mr. Swilly?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Abstain.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. Under new business, item number one, recommend a resolution be adopted approving the application for payment number four to Dunmore Roofing for the Tuncanic High School roof in the amount of $147,141.11.
Motion to approve, Holly.
Second.
Now, I have, I have a question. Um, the last time we were, how many payments are there total? I don't have my book with me, so I don't know if this is the final payment to Dunmore Roofing?
I don't think it's the final payment because the work isn't incomplete. So the work is, this week just started on the administration building. I believe that this is the final payment for the high school. But I'll follow up with John Shipolsky, and I'll get a status update on the remaining payments. But my understanding is that this is, I believe, the final for the high school, but I'll double check on that, Lori.
Okay, here's my concern, because after we, when we, years ago, did work on Evans Falls, and at that point, I was on the building committee, building and grounds. After Mr. Widener and I did a walkthrough, after the final payment was made, there were, there was so much stuff that was not completed correctly, and it was already too late for us. So I just want to make sure that as we're making these payments, Mr. Shipolsky is okay with the job done.
So two comments. One, John just sent me a text, and he said there's one more payment after this for the high school. So that clarifies that question. Second, what I'll say is that John has been actively involved in the process of the work that they're doing. And I'm confident that he has had the opportunity to regularly be kept abreast of the status of their work. So if any members of the building and grounds committee want to participate in a walkthrough prior to that final payment, please let me know, and I will work with John to get that scheduled. And if you have any specific questions about the status of the work, John's an excellent resource for that. But at least now, you know, we can confirm there's one more payment for the high school.
Okay, thank you.
Gotcha.
Any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Dr. Pobola?
Yes.
Mr. Swilly?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. Yes, did that come through?
Yes. Yep, so we're done.
Okay. Item number two, recommend that a resolution be adopted approving the posting and subsequent appointment of an assistant director of special education under Act 93. Make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
So I, I will explain to you, currently, we, Mary Beth's title is Special Education Coordinator, and that position is in the teacher's contract. We have advertised for some time, several weeks, and we have had no applicants. So what I'm asking for here is that from, we try to add it to the Act 93 and see if we can't get an applicant who we can put in in that position, at least temporarily. It doesn't mean that we would not fill, you know, fill it forever as, as an Act 93, but I am really trying to attract good applicants.
Yes, and the special ed program at Tuncanic is more taxed than at traditional other schools, which was something we've now known about for what, John, 10 years? John Burke, you were on that committee. The need here is much higher, so we, we can't afford to not have these roles filled.
Go back. Yep. Go back. Yep.
Any other discussion?
We need a memorandum of understanding with the teachers' union that we're moving it to Act 93, so we don't have to double that position up.
I did discuss it with them, um, and the fact that we could not fill it, I think, um, is, you know, we attempted to fill it in the teacher's contract.
Agreed, but it's still going to sit out there with the possibility of someone saying, oh, I think I want it. And then we have two people covering the same position. That's my concern.
I don't believe we're required to fill every position in the contract, right?
It, I mean, it was posted, it is no longer posted.
So maybe we just need to clarify that with Mr. Audi, just to make sure that we're covered on that.
There's no obligation to fill every position in the bargaining unit as, um, Ms. Arnold had, had stated. And, um, my understanding is if, um, if Superintendent McPherson, um, spoke to the union about it and they posted it couldn't fill it, then, um, I, I think that we'd be okay at least in the short term.
All right, thanks, John.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Swilly?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Lori?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. All right, that brings us to our last new business, the discussion of superintendent hiring.
Um, so I had developed a screen based on the timeline that we've been discussing and I will pull it up here, if that's okay, John? Uh, let you talk it through.
Yep, that works for me. All right, very good. So this is a proposed timeline, so, um, we're looking to advertise, um, in the, you know, near future here for a couple of weeks. So we're going to advertise for that, hopefully here with 18th to the 29th, we close those applications. And then shortly after that, we would, uh, interview those candidates. So Heather, I think that timeline for the interview, the candidates, uh, needs to be after that. So we gotta look to it, we'll, we'll adjust that.
That's, John, that's for the interim.
Oh, 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 sorry, yeah.
Not for the
I apologize, my mistake on the reading. Um, concurrently to advertising for the full-time superintendent, um, we do have a few applicants who have applied for the interim position. So those of you who are not at the, uh, previous board meeting where we talked a little bit about this, um, the idea will be is, is there's, there's likely a, a, almost a hundred percent, but there will be a gap between, um, when we'd be able to bring on a new superintendent to, uh, when Heather would be leaving. So, uh, we're going to need to bring in an interim for a period of time that's yet to be determined. The end date will depend on how quickly we can get the full-time superintendent in. Um, you know, I think it's a high probability that that person would not be able to start until around July 1st. Um, and so hopefully that, uh, timeline is a little bit earlier, but we're sort of planning against that as being a, a probable point. Uh, we then execute round one of those interviews for the, uh, superintendent, uh, November 1st, uh, for those, a couple of weeks. Afterward, we would narrow whatever that pool of applicants would be down to a couple of folks and then do those final rounds of interviews, the 15th through the 26th. Um, during that time, those round two interviews would include building visits. So that way, um, we would have sort of an all-day visit planned, um, that would include some interviews as well as meeting some of our faculty and staff and administrators. And then ideally shortly after that, around the earlier part of December, um, we would have that candidate selected and then we would vote on that. So, um, that's our proposed schedule. Um, it's pretty aggressive. Uh, we want to move on as quickly as we can. Um, because we're, we're obviously going to be operating with an interim superintendent, so trying to minimize that gap as much as we can is, is what we're looking to do. Holly, Bill, or other board members, any comments on that?
I would just clarify, I think the board is already aware of this, but, um, for the community, we understand that there's an election coming up and that there will be at least two new candidates or two new members of our school board who would be seated the night of December 2nd. Um, the intention of the board is that once the election happens and things are determined as to, um, whether any seats are changing, then, uh, those individuals would be participating in all of the November interviews and activities that, uh, so that would be like the second round of the interviews would be the whole board, the building visits, you know, if they wanted to, uh, that kind of thing. So nobody's going to be coming in as a school board member that night, completely fresh with no background information and asked to make a vote, if it even comes together on this timeline. So.
No, I, I think that's good. I, I, you know, I, I, I think this is the way to go. We're trying to move on it, um, quickly. All right, that's all I had to say on that. Heather, thank you for putting that slide up.
Yeah, there is no board action that's required on that. That was just being shared for everybody's information. Okay, uh, any other board comments?
There are, Anne is up first. Anne, you can speak now, you're unmuted. Anne, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, sorry, our internet keeps going in and out again, so I keep losing the connection. But anyhow, um, at the last board meeting, when I was listening, there couldn't see who it was. And now we kept getting disconnected, so I went back and watched it on YouTube. So if it's allowed, I would like to please read the letter that I sent to him in email, um, regarding that. Is that okay?
Sure, you have four minutes. You're good.
Don't need that long. Um, Mr. Perry, I was very disappointed with the way you conducted yourself as a board member at the last school board meeting. You were name-calling a group of concerned citizens, and I'm quoting, "a bunch of wackos." You made light of their concerns when you threatened to get rid of the banned football team to chase ghosts. While you may not agree with their concerns, they have a right to bring them up at a public board meeting. And you should not assume that there are, and I'm quoting again, "only five to 10 people out of 15,000 who also have similar concerns." You do not know how many spoke into 15,000 people in Wyoming County. You probably haven't even asked 1,000 parents and citizens how they feel. You've never asked me or anyone in my family. You are coming across as a bully. That is not acceptable. It's not proper behavior for a school board member. And it was a very bad example for any children watching the meeting. I'm very disappointed and concerned that someone who acts this way is in charge of making decisions that directly affect my children and all the children in the district. And as far as covering the additional legal costs incurred by the district, perhaps we can look at the budget for the 2021, 2022 school year and find a way to cut back on the amount of money that's spent on administrative salaries. According to page 15, it was one million, three hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars. I'm pretty sure there's somewhere in there, we can cut some of those costs if we need to instead of raising our taxes again, or cutting, hold a lot of fundraisers to earn money to support their kids during the year. Um, that's all that I really wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, who's next?
George Yuhaas. You're unmuted.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to read a letter, please. Um, I have something after the letter too. Hopefully I'll get it done inside of four minutes for everybody. Uh, from George Yuhaas, a concerned citizen of Wyoming County, dear Tuncanic area school board president, school board members and superintendent, this letter of admonishment is to serve as public record of, of misconduct by a Tuncanic area school board. The intent of this letter is to improve, correct, and instruct board members of appropriate action and behaviors moving forward. I respectfully request that after reviewing this letter, which I will send to each one of you, the president of the Tuncanic area school board will officially admonish the board in its entirety for affecting, for actively engaging in misconduct or allowing it to happen. Rules of conduct exist that need to be adhered to, both inside and outside of the school board meetings. The following 10 acts are true and accurate writ, so help me God. Number one, after a school board meeting, I was physically confronted in a hostile body-to-body stance by a school board member. This was witnessed by other school board members, administrators, and members of the public. Number two, I requested the addresses of sitting members to petition and redress my grievances through the mail. I was told by a school board member that they would give me their physical directions to their home, which was a challenge to come to their home under adversarial conditions. Number three, one school board member said they would take care of me their way. Number four, another school board member publicly charged me with trying to arrest school board members. Number five, a school board member said that my legal pursuit of the school board is a desperate attempt and very unfortunate and frankly unhealthy for me and my family. Note, this member has not spoken to my children in years, yet within a short period of time from their admonishment, this member addressed my child in an odd encounter. Number six, in a public view board meeting, one of the school board members referred to me and anyone who questioned the board as followed. The board is being drug around by a bunch of whack jobs and it's only like five or 10 people versus the 15,000 people that represent us. Correction, you represent us. Children, uh, number seven, school board members publicly accused me of being the author of a letter of resignation in the effort to continue shaming me. This due to the freedom of information requests and right to know documents I have asked for, implying that my actions will lead to the shutdown or football program and ban program in order to fund their legal bills. Number eight, in response to my difficulty joining the last board Zoom meeting, I was treated condescendingly in an attempt to humiliate. It should be noted that many have difficulty participating in Zoom meetings, especially older folks with technology challenges. Zoom is inherently closed to participation by many and should only be used in emergencies. Number nine, during a school board meeting, I tried, number nine, I, 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 guys, can I please finish? During a school board meeting, I tried to legally object to new business. The presiding board member swiftly shut me down and childishly said, "No, no, 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 no." Number 10, I am repeatedly and publicly asked
50 seconds.
I am repeatedly and publicly asked by school board members for the list of their opposition in an obvious attempt to single out and intimidate individuals, thus subjecting them to the same treatment that I have endured. At this time, I do not wish to identify individual members who have perpetuated these acts, but they can welcome to come forward. However, if I'm asked to do so, I am willing to sign a legal notarized affidavit and provide all record evidence and so, recorded evidence and signed witness statements sustaining these claims. I'm a veteran of both the Army and most proudly
Mr. Yuhaas, you have 15 seconds.
I served as a, not as an infantryman on four different continents in combat roles. Your intimidation does not work on me, but may cause others not to engage the board meeting. This adversarial and hyperbolic rhetoric from our elected officials will lead to greater divide in our community.
Mr. Yuhaas, we must mute you. You have four minutes. Next up to speak is Shira Knight.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. During last week's meeting, the school board asked that everyone be respectful and courteous, then proceeded to claim that they were being drug around by a bunch of whack jobs, led the meeting in a condescending way when people were having computer issues, and allowed personal attacks on members of the public. I, along with other members of the community, am asking that this behavior stop. My son attended a high school in Arizona, which was about six times the size of Tuncanic. I still remember during his freshman orientation, the principal stood up in the auditorium filled with anxious freshmen and their parents. Our school motto is stay classy. What does that mean? Well, I'm going to challenge this class throughout the four years of high school and beyond. The next time you post on social media, see somebody in the hall or disagree with a peer, stay classy. You represent our school and our community. To our school board, superintendent, and administration, I challenge you to stay classy. Realize that you represent the citizens of this county. We appreciate that the school board volunteers their time. But if you can't control your behavior, then maybe it's time to step aside and let someone else take your place. Secondly, I have a question on vaccine databases. A school board member responded to a post I'd written and said, quote, "A couple comments here have given me the impression that many of you don't realize the school has full access to view the statewide vaccine database, which includes the COVID vaccine. I would like to know right now, is that true?" I'll wait for the, or, or somebody could answer me, that'd be good, if you could take my time, stop my time and answer my question.
Yes, I found that information through a Google search, that there is a vaccination, um, database that schools, not schools a whole, but specific members of a school, nursing staff, can get logins to be able to verify, uh, all vaccinations, which does include the COVID vaccine. If I'm mistaken, then I'm sure somebody can correct me.
I'm asking specifically, does Tuncanic area school district utilize that database?
Yes.
Okay. Also, is it true that the school nurse and other staff are asking children directly if they have been vaccinated when they are a close contact? I'd like an answer to that too, without taking my time.
I don't know that that has, um, occurred in my presence, but I, I, and I'm not privy to every single conversation, Shira. So I'm not, I'm not going to absolutely say it's never happened.
Okay, okay, so parents online, I've spoken to a lawyer and I've confirmed that the school is not legally allowed to ask a minor if they have been vaccinated. This is a question that should be only directed to parents. Also, when asked, parents are in no way obligated to disclose private medical information about their child. This is private information. You do not have to answer this. Um, another question is, after the extracurricular meeting that was held prior to this meeting tonight, after that concluded, they, um, we decided that the facilities would be open on Sundays to the public. I would like to ask publicly now, will the board open the auditorium once again for board meetings, uh, during the week? And then if you could take my time off and answer that question.
Heather, add that discussion to the next board meeting agenda, please.
Okay, so finally, we've talked a lot about the right to know request last week. We, um, heard George in particular ask direct questions of the board, questions that should be easily answered only to be ignored. At least a third of the right to know requests that have been submitted could have easily been answered over the counter with zero redactions or lawyer involvement. The school chose to withhold the information. The right to know requests would go away if the school
You have about 55 seconds.
In honor, this request from the beginning, this is self-inflicted. Football and ban budgets do not be, need to be reduced. Wasteful spending should be the first thing addressed, and maybe we should consider looking at no additional salary increases. During this pandemic, this district has proven that it's best that spending other people's money on frivolous items and giving itself raises. The school needs to start budgeting like the taxpayers in the community, instead of burdening said taxpayers whenever they see fit. Thanks for your time tonight and please stay classy.
Okay, who's next?
Sarah Straby, I'm going to unmute you. You may speak.
All right, I only have two things to address, and one is that George Yuhaas does not speak for me as a concerned Wyoming County citizen, ever. And the second one is, what is the district doing for the gifted program for cyber students? That's my question.
So Sarah, I, we just hired a gifted coordinator, and I, I would need to confer with her on what she, what her communication has been to our cyber students. I'm not really sure at this point what that is. I know she's putting together a list, she had sent me a PowerPoint the other day, of a list of resources, and she has some pretty creative ideas. I'm not sure, she's only been with us since October 1st, so I'm not sure that she's had time to execute.
Okay, I only ask because I've, after speaking with the counselor for the IC, there seems to be no gifted program for the C3 program.
Okay.
For me, that's an issue, for my kid who's in the C3 program for the last two years.
I, I, that is not our intent, and I will circle around with Annie Moran tomorrow.
All right.
And I'll have a reach out to you, Sarah.
Thank you, I appreciate that. These guys are awesome, I appreciate everything that you do. That's all. I'm done.
Thanks, Sarah. All right, who is next?
Russ Knight, you are now unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
My question is, the children, are the children three feet apart in the classrooms?
Yes, they are.
So they're three feet apart and masked?
Yes, that is the directive, three feet apart and masked.
Okay, am I mistaken that the CDC says that if you are three feet apart in masks, you do not need contact trace? The only contact tracing we really should be doing would be the bus.
Right, that is correct. And the only other place, Mr. Knight, that is a potential problem for us is the high school cafeteria. And although we're trying to get kids to sit just three to a table, it's, it's, it's a challenge. But, but yes, you are correct. The only places, the primary places we are contact tracing are the bus and the high school cafeteria.
Because my son was sent home for being in close contact, and obviously, everyone knows who everyone has COVID, and he was sent home for a math class that he was in close contact with. So I'm just confused as to why he was sent home if he's three feet apart and wearing a mask.
Um, I can't answer that without doing some research.
Okay. I can, I can potentially add some insight to that, just because I know what my kids are doing. There are some classes where they do have group projects and things to that effect, that they might be closer together, but it's not their normal seating arrangement from what my understanding is. I don't know if that is the situation that your son was in, but I know that that has been in discussion with my kids. You know, I hear it more in like science labs and things like that where it has come up.
Okay.
Jerry Jordan, you're unmuted, you may speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Good evening. I have a few questions and a few comments, and I agree with the "Stay classy," first of all. However, I believe it needs to be completely across the board. The public needs to follow that as well. That is not an understatement, and from what I have seen from being at these meetings more than just recently, the public incites things that then causes reactions, as well as sometimes a board member may. We're allowed to disagree with each other, we just need to learn to be kind to each other, and we should teach our children that while we're at it. I have a question for you, Heather. Am I correct that if a child is vaccinated, it makes the quarantine times a little bit different?
If a child is vaccinated, they do not need to quarantine, provided that they are asymptomatic. So if you and I were together, and I was, and you know, I was deemed a close contact, and I had my vaccine, I would not need to quarantine as long as I don't have any symptoms.
Okay, well, that leads me into the question about the nurses asking if the children are vaccinated. I certainly would hope, as a parent of a child who is 15, which is in that age group that can be vaccinated, that if he was sent down there as a contact, that they would ask him that, because it makes a difference for his quarantining.
Right, so the way that we discussed it, and I, again, I'm not going to promise that that question was never asked because I'm not a part of every conversation. What I will tell you, Jerry, is that when I have been involved in close, in contact tracing, what my approach has been is to say to parents, there are two different scenarios here. If your child isn't, is, and it, one is if they're vaccinated, another is if they're not vaccinated, and you're under no obligation to tell me. But this is what happens if your child isn't vaccinated, and this is what happens if your child is. Nine times out of 10, the parents would, would volunteer the information, and that was the way that I approached it. I never asked a parent, "Is your kid vaccinated?" So that was the way I approached it, is there's two scenarios here, and I'm going to assume that your child needs to quarantine unless you tell me otherwise.
Correct. And as a parent, I feel it would be my obligation to provide the school with that vaccination. I mean, we provide them with all our other vaccinations, so it's just another piece of paper, in my opinion, that proves something. And George, as I see your comment, and yes, COVID can be spread by anybody. I'm not denying that. I was just curious on the quarantining, and I would be okay with a nurse asking my child, because it would make a difference as to whether they're sent home to quarantine or they stay in school at that point. My other comment is, somebody had some, said something about children are not, minors are not able to consent. Well, Geisinger and Toncanic will fight you on that. You have to sign, and your child has to sign a right for their information to be shared at the age of 14 in the state of Pennsylvania. And as far as the website for vaccinations, for 20 years, I worked at a facility that dealt with juvenile delinquents, and that website is available to every school in Pennsylvania for certain personnel. It is not an open website. It is one that they have to be registered, you have to prove that there is a need to be in there, and it helps with, especially with delinquents who are bounced from facility to facility to get them into school quicker, because the records are accessible so much quicker. It's basically an open right to know amongst schools, but it's put into a database, is how I was taught when I registered and used it. And I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jerry, I'll piggyback on that real quick and say that I worked in drug and alcohol treatment for a long time, and a child can enter drug and alcohol treatment without parental permission at the age of 12 in this state. So not that it's super relevant to this, but it is accurate to say that, you know, kids at a certain age below 18 are able to answer for themselves in legal matters of their health. All right, who's next?
Tracy. You're unmuted.
Tracy, can you say your full names, just because it's not your screen name, so-
Tracy Palahan.
Thank you.
Um, my children are, are grown, and I'm now raising my grandson, so I'm pretty new at all this. But when my kids were young, we, they were not allowed to come into school unless they had other vaccinations. They had to have their measles and their mumps, and if they didn't have them, they couldn't come until they were up to date on their shots. So I don't understand what the big deal is that certain people are making about asking if they were vaccinating or making sure they're protected. I'm just, can somebody explain that to me? Like, what is the big argument about making sure the kids are safe and not spreading this disease around?
I don't know that the board has an answer for that. I would, I would think just personally, as a parent, my answer would be regarding the COVID vaccine. There are a lot of different perspectives, it's relatively new. So I can definitely understand where some parents are coming from, not wanting their child to be vaccinated at this time, but I can't speak to the specifics of-
Right, and we didn't have, like, we had to have, like, we don't have a problem getting the flu vaccine or other vaccinations. I don't realize why we have so much pushback on this one particular topic that's causing lawyer fees, and I mean, it's ridiculous already. We have more things to worry about. That's all.
I kind of have a, I have a question, Holly, to piggybacking off of that. Um, and Heather, I don't know if one of our nurses is on the meeting or not. But do, if there is a nurse, if not, Heather, do you foresee in the future that this may be added to that list for kindergarten registration in the future?
Lori, I have no crystal ball. I can't tell you, right now, it's not required for anybody. It's voluntary completely.
Okay.
I don't see that being an avenue this board would be going down if it was a local decision anytime soon. But I also would be surprised if the state tried to make it a requirement.
Correct, that's kind of why I was asking, yeah.
Heather, there is a question in the chat box from Jennifer.
Can nurses let kids know when they are called to the nurse's office, when they have been declared a close contact? Um, I, I think it would depend on the age of the student, whether we would have that conversation with them or not. But I know, like, you know, with a high school student, we might have that conversation and say, you know, you've been identified as a close contact. Typically, what happens in the younger grades is the parent gets the phone call, and we explain it to the parent.
There's no other questions or comments in the chat box?
I wanted to say a couple things. One is, I wanted to respond to some of the spending questions. There was a couple folks who brought up spending. So as treasurer of the board, I just want to make sure that folks who are new to this process kind of have an idea of where the district came from, from a total spending perspective. So I just pulled some of the numbers. Our total spending in 1999-2000, so going back 20 type of years, for our district was about $25, $26 million in total spend. And then subsequently, up through 2015, it went up to about $49 million. So not double, but pretty close to that. It's about a 90% increase over those years. Since that period of time, we are actually down 4% on total spend over those next five years. And so this board has been very focused on cost, making some pretty tough decisions. Obviously, we had consolidation, and the total enrollment for our employees is down tremendously over those five years. So that's with the backdrop of increasing costs in things like contractual obligations, insurance, special ed requirements. There's an enormous amount of things that drove costs up, and we were actually able to more than offset that and actually decrease total spend. So I want to commend the administration across the board for that work on cost. So I think it's important that we don't lose sight of where that was over a 20-year time horizon and how much that's turned around in the last five years. The other thing is, is I can only speak for myself. This board in total, but again, back to myself, has had a lot of nasty things said to each one of us. And so I've chosen to stay as classy as I possibly could. But accusations like abusive children and things like that are pretty serious allegations to be made. And so I just want to make sure everyone's crystal clear that I believe we're doing a pretty good job of trying to stay classy moving forward. But there's been some really heinous things said about myself personally, and I just don't appreciate it. And so I'm going to continue to work hard for this district, the kids, the employees, but I'm going to continue to do what I feel is best for our community and represent all of those stakeholders. But accusing me of abusing children is really something that is over the top. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Um, there was a question in the chat regarding masks on the bus, and I'm not sure if Heather saw it, but I, I feel confident answering that masks are to be enforced on the bus, and that if a parent is aware of a situation where they are not, they should contact administration directly, whether that be their school principal, and go from there. So.
The other thing I would add, Holly, is that it's very difficult on the bus to guarantee that kids are three feet apart. Some of these buses are very crowded. Kids are moving around, they're moving past each other. And so, again, that is where we're, we are doing the majority of our contact tracing.
Great. Uh, you don't have anybody else who's asked to speak for themselves, do you? Mary Jean?
Um, Holly, at one point, I did stop the chat because there wasn't anything in there related to comments from the public. I can open it up again very quickly, but I just want to make sure it's being used properly.
Correct, all right, sounds great. Last chance for public comment. An individual would need to enter their own name into the chat, not have it done for them by anyone else. Is the chat open now? Mary Jean, you're muted. I apparently was not.
Holly, there is no additional.
Okay.
Second.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Night.
Night.